Okay, well, we'll call to order our study session for the December 7th, and it's gonna be a pretty easy one today. We're just focusing on ARPA. We've got Caleb Stanton and Michelle Murray here to give us a presentation on where we're at with ARPA dollars. And Council President Wilkerson is out of town on an AWC meeting, so I'm filling in today. And council members of town as well.
Okay, well, thank you very much. My name is Michelle Murray. I'm the Accounting Grants Director, and this is Caleb Stanton. He is one of my ARPA coordinators, and then Lad Lukin. And we're here today to just present to you basically the bulk of the projects that we worked on this year, give you the update, the status, and so forth for 2023 for the ARPA funds.
All right, hope you guys are ready for an exciting presentation. Caleb Stanton, again, ARPA Coordinator with the city. I have been with the city a year and three months, and was brought on specifically for these ARPA projects. And so all of these projects I've been working on pretty much the whole time I've been here. And we have had a busy year. These are the nine major projects that we have worked on. We have the Assistance to Nonprofits, Assistance to Small Business, Child Care Cultural Incentives Grant, the Down Payment Assistance, Employment Support of the Arts, Higher Education, Pre-Aprentership, and Youth Behavioral Health. So my goal in this presentation is to give a broad overview of the major projects that we've had and that we've worked on, and then I'm also gonna give contract details with specific up-to-date spend downs on each of these contracts, so that you guys have that information moving forward, and it can kind of inform your decisions. Beginning of next year, kind of once the dust settles and everything's happened, I'm gonna get the organizations for kind of those major contracts back in front of you guys again to kind of give the more specifics of the details of those contracts. But today, we just wanna kind of give the 50,000-foot view of the programs that we have going on and the ones that we've completed. So if any time throughout the presentation you have any questions, feel free to stop me. Just ask any questions, all right? So we can go ahead to the next slide. All right, Assistance to Nonprofits. This was a $5 million program. The ARPA Assistance Program provided grants directly to nonprofits who are impacted by the COVID pandemic. This was a very big project. We had about 240 applications for this, for these grants. And so I am pleased to announce that we did award 100% of the $5 million. So 100% of that was awarded. We had 140 total awards. The maximum awards were 45,000. However, in the second round, we divvied it up into two different rounds. In the second round, there was an additional $20,000 award amount that was scored and ranked that they could apply for. And there was a lot of organizations that applied for that additional 20,000. Basically, for that additional 20,000, we were saying what nonprofits were disproportionately impacted by COVID and which ones responded as a result of COVID, and show us that in these responses, that you responded, that you provided for the community. And based on that, the Scoring Committee did a really good job and distributed a bunch more funds with the additional 20,000. So our average award throughout the whole thing was 35,700 for those awards. And I also wanna point out, for all of these award lists and all the awarded organizations, all of that is listed on the city's ARPA page. So we have an ARPA page, all of that's on there. You can go to the awarded organizations, you can pull up that full award list for nonprofits, small business, and even for these other major profits. And you can get the rundown of what the projects are, what the details are, all online there. Additionally, I worked with Lisa Gardner to create some videos for some of the projects that have been going on. So I think a couple of those videos have dropped already. And I think she's working on potentially doing some smaller videos for some of these nonprofits and the small businesses that were affected to kind of get an idea of how that affected them. Think it might still be in the works, I'm not sure. If that's something you guys want, we can follow up with Lisa on that. But that's the Assistance to Nonprofits. I do wanna point out, sorry, I did get the district information on those, on where each nonprofit was in their districts. And I think the layout of that was pretty good. 36% in District 1, 36% in District 2, and District 3 with 28% of those awards.
And so are those where they are based, or is that where they do a predominant amount of their work?
That is their principal place of business. So they could be doing, you know, work other downtown or other things as well. But to get the layout, we use their principal place of business.
And then do you have any kind of just a general breakdown by focus type? In other words, you know, are they focused on, you know, are they nonprofit focused on supporting, you know, people who are impoverished, or are they a nonprofit focused on, you know, some other aspect of improving society? I'm just wondering, do we have a breakdown of that, and then also on the small business as well? Kind of by industry type?
We do not have a specific breakdown of, I mean, I can go back and I can look at the organizations. If there's a specific, I don't know what specific types, you know, if you're looking at homelessness, or if you're looking at food distribution, I mean, they're...
I just think it'd be great to be able to say 30% focused on homelessness, 28% focused on that, you know, just that.
Yeah, I'm happy to go back and look at all of those awards and kind of, you know, we can come up with some categories that we wanna say, these are the categories for nonprofits, and these where they lie. I can definitely do that for both small business and nonprofit. So you can go ahead now to the Assistance. Assistance to Small Business, this was another $5 million project, similar to the nonprofit. It was ARPA Assistance Program, provided grants directly to those small businesses that were impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. So this was even a bigger project than the nonprofit was. We had 437 applications for that. Not all of those applications were fully completed. However, many of those reached out directly for assistance on how to apply and different things. We did run some workshops for the community on how they can apply. And we also contracted with the Carl Maxi Center and HBPA, who did technical assistance to small businesses in their community. And they were really, they were open to everyone. They did a great job assisting organizations apply for the grant funds. But it was just a very big project, and it was more technical because we had to, basically, we had to qualify them based on revenue losses, how we started. We're first looking on what was your revenue loss pre-pandemic, and then 2020 and 2021. However, because there's so many different small businesses, and they all act differently, the pandemic all affected them differently. So we ended up extending it to revenue loss, increased expenses, as well as new businesses who started in 2020 and 2021. So they could qualify in those three, in those three ways. And so I am happy to announce that we awarded 90% of the funds to small businesses, just over 4.5 million. Out of that 5 million, that was 152 total awards. The maximum award was 45,000. The average award is close to that $30,000 mark. You will notice the district information is not quite as evenly distributed as it was for the nonprofit with 54% in District 1, 21% in District 2, and 25% in District 3. I'm not exactly sure why that is. We had the same outreach, and we even, you know, had those people providing technical assistance for those businesses. You know, you guys may have a better picture of what that looks like. There is a ton of concentrated businesses downtown and up-division. So my guess would be there's just more businesses in District 1. And so that could be due to that fact, but I wanted to make sure that that was put up there.
District 1 has, I think, traditionally garnered the most, the sales tax for the area.
Yeah, that would make sense. And that's, again, then that would be reflected in the way that these are laid out, which is good. This, I will say, this was a really cool project to work on, both the Assistance to Small Business and nonprofits. I worked directly with a lot of businesses, a lot of nonprofits. And so many of them were very, very thankful of these funds from the city. And so I wanna make sure that is relayed to you. I have pages and pages of emails that I would be happy to forward to you of people just saying how thankful they were for these funds. So I think this was a really cool project. And really, I spent a ton of my time in my year at the city on this, these two projects. The majority of what I've been doing is these two. So any more questions on those two before I turn it over to Lad?
All right. Actually, one, you said 90%, so does that mean there's 10% that's still sitting in the pot? Is that...
Yes, yep, yep. The 4.5 was awarded. And you'll actually see near the end of the presentation, I'll go over a little bit more. But some of the challenging part for small businesses and nonprofits was the receipts for these, because these ARPA funds are, they're reimbursing funds, with reimbursement only. So we had to pay for things that have already happened. So we asked them for receipts 2020 up until they submitted their application. And we said, we can reimburse those receipts. Well, some of the nonprofits and small businesses were so small, and their record-keeping was not good. They could show their financial statements, but they could not show the receipts for those expenses. So there's a small portion of, that was not, that was awarded that wasn't paid out because we couldn't get those proper receipts. But I'll show that at the end. It's a pretty small amount. Because we worked really hard to get all of the proper receipts.
Yeah, so is this closed now?
They are both, yeah, completed programs. I mean, if they, it's obviously council's decision if what you wanna do with those funds, reopen, whatever. But they are completely closed, and funds have been paid out. And all of those funds have been paid in 2023.
Michelle, at the end of this, do we have kind of an estimate as to what is the remaining ARPA dollars in the kitty, so to speak?
Yes, short answer is yes. I watch it every month, and I update a report every month, and I'll be happy to send that to you.
Okay, yes, thank you. Our next program is Child Care, which is awarded 3.5 million to community-minded enterprises. This is a really cool program that gives families opportunity to go back into the workforce by allowing childcare subsidies through this award. Another cool thing, so it's the childcare subsidy and staff retention bonuses. So 2 million of this grant has been budgeted for the staff retention and sign-on bonuses, and then 800,000, 830,000, excuse me, budgeted for childcare subsidy. This contract started in November of 2022, and is projected to end in 2024 in November as well.
So this is one that's really important to me. I'm wondering, do we have breakdowns at all yet on district, both in terms of the staff retention, so the specific childcare centers that we're funding, as well as the subsidy that would go to parents?
Yeah, yeah, we do have an ongoing, it's a working, pending list from community-minded enterprises, and we will update it as time goes by, for sure.
And do we think that all these dollars are getting out the door?
Working with them on a monthly and quarterly basis, you know, we were passing that information along to them, stressing the importance of getting this out. They are spreading the news. I mean, they're working really hard to make sure that all this is spent down. We do have another, what, year or so to make sure that we get this going.
About the half, I think around half of those retention bonuses have started to go out the door. So that 509 spin down through November has part of those in there, but it doesn't have all of them. And there's gonna be a first round, and then a second round at the end for those retention bonuses and sign-on bonuses. So part of that is the childcare subsidy part of it. They're having a little bit of issues getting it out the door. And I think we had changed some qualifications for that. It didn't get relayed. Yeah, I'm trying to remember the exact details of it. But they broadened it basically to encompass more families, so that we can try to get more of that childcare subsidy out.
Okay, yeah, so the subsidy was given 100% for the first month, 50% second month, and then 25% for the third month.
Okay, and this is one too where just, whether it's quarterly or whatever makes sense, it would be great to just get some routine updates, just to see kind of both in terms of how much is getting out, but also where. I'd love to see more geographically.
Yeah, certainly, we can do that.
Great, thank you. Councilor Bingle, did you have a question?
No, I was just talking. I don't remember it being so heavily weighted towards staff retention. I thought it was more in favor of the subsidy than staff retention.
I don't think it was specified. I think it was for both, but I don't think it was specified in what we approved.
Just kind of hurt my heart a little bit to see that it was less on subsidy and more on staff retention. But, you know, you can't have childcare without staff, I guess.
Well, and I think that was the whole issue, was keeping people and paying them what they were making. You know, go to McDonald's and make more.
Oh, I know. We have a hard time keeping staff in our business. I totally get it. But it just felt like maybe more should have gone to the subsidy, so that's it. That's all I'm thinking.
That's fair.
Next one, please. Next program is Down Payment Assistance, 1.5 million awarded to the America Credit Union, providing the opportunity for first-time homebuyers with a family income below 200% AMI. This contract has started this year, March of 2023, and is projected to end in 2025. And then so 1.25 million is for direct client assistance. 243,174 has been spent through October at this point. And 220 of that has been for, has gone out to direct assistance. Any questions about this one? It's fairly new. We're still ongoing. We're meeting with America on a quarterly meeting, I think.
As we're going on this, if we could just, if it's not too much work, understand where they fall in that, you know, below the AMI, you know, is it all 198, or is it, you know, 60, where we're falling in there? I love this program. I think it's great, helping people get into homeownership, I think, is a great cause for us as a city. So just kind of wanna know where that falls in there.
Okay, yeah, yeah, we can communicate that. Next slide, please. The Cultural Incentive Grant. Overall, we've done two rounds. The first one was last year, and this is the second round for 2023, budgeted at 900,000. We completed the 2022 awards with 26 events awarded, with 369,000 spent. With that one, we did 50% reimbursement for their event. And like I said, we had 26 organizations or events for that first round. The second round, we changed a couple things in it that we allowed 75% reimbursement instead of the 50. And then we did allow for upfront advance payment, which I believe was awarded to one or two. But with this one, for this round, we awarded 34 organizations or events. And we're still working on the spend-down, because it's, you know, we still have this month to complete everything for that one. The maximum award for this second round is 25,000, averaging around 15 and a half, a little over. Any questions about that?
What were some of the kind of big events, and I think what were some of the successes that you saw?
Yeah, well, big events, we had, we awarded Spokane Hoop Fest. We did Latinos in Spokane. We did, I'm trying to, trying to think. Yeah, tacos, yeah, and tequila.
Oh, tacos and tequila, yeah. I think Lunar New Year received a cultural grant.
Yep, yep, and we have, I know we have Spokane Humong Association is doing their event this Saturday. So that's, and then we had, I believe, South Asia did a couple of their events. Sister Cities did, yeah.
One of our regular Shiloh Hills Neighborhood Council attendees, the Indian couple, they, their event got funded, I know, too, for like 10 grand or something.
Yeah, that was a great, great event, too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, next slide. Spokane Arts, or the program is Employment Support of the Arts. Spokane Arts was awarded 1 million for this. Contract also began in March of this year, scheduled to end in 2024. 594,995 went, has been spent through November. Individual artists have received, I think we're looking at 134,000 for the, dispersed out of the 200 for round two. Performing arts venues awarded 120K. Nonprofits and creative businesses, 520 of the 600 for round two as well. And it's still ongoing, and so we're, we're, we're meeting with them also on a monthly, or was it quarterly? I think it was quarterly basis, and also communicating the spend-down and receiving all the...
Would love to know, of the 120,000, how many, what percentage was not downtown?
Not downtown?
Yeah.
Okay.
You want just the full district?
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, well, I guess technically downtown is now District 1, so if you could break out downtown.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would recommend when Spokane Arts, I think they do quarterly reports to council at a committee. I think it's Urban Experience. Yeah, that they can break that down and do a presentation on it, because I know that they've been getting money out and...
Yeah, we can communicate that to them, yeah, certainly. Any other questions about this one? All right, next one. Pre-Aprentership Program awarded 400K to Inland Northwest AGC. This is also a really cool program that allows recently released individuals from incarceration to receive, you know, training in the construction industry. And at this point, we've had 150,000 spent through October. The program itself lasts, I think, six weeks courses. They've, they've worked with over 100 students at this point so far in this, in this year. And the next graduating class is actually the 20th of this month. So if you'd like to attend, let us know. We'll send an invite.
And is it correct that some of the folks who've gone through this were people that were at Camp Hope?
You know, I'm not, I'm not too sure.
That's the other program.
Is that the other program?
Yeah, could be. I know they're working with Geiger Heights right now to, you know, to develop more, more, more programs for them. Any questions? Thank you. Giving it back to Caleb.
All right, we're in the homestretch. Only a few more programs. Here we go. Higher Education, this was a contract with Launch Northwest, which is kind of under the umbrella of the Inovia Foundation. This was a $5 million project. This, again, is a very big project. And so this is, this program is pushing students into higher education by providing wraparound services in Spokane schools, as well as Last Dollar Scholarships to students attending an Institute of Secondary Learning. So they're trying to push students from high school up into secondary learning. And so this contract started at the end of 2022, so right there in December 1, 2022, and ends at the end of 2026. So this is actually the only contract we're monitoring that goes through the whole end of the ARPA period. That's the very end of that 12/31/26.
So that's as long as we have is till that date?
As far as, that's the longest. I don't know if there's another program that's going that long, but that I'm, we're managing.
What's the exact question? I'm sorry.
Well, I guess, I thought that the date we had to expend by was sooner than the end of '26. I thought it was earlier in '26.
Money's had to be encumbered by 12/31/2024. They have to be completely spent by 12/31/26.
Perfect, okay.
My understanding was that a lot of this money was not getting out of the door, and they were having troubles with money getting out of the door. Is that accurate?
So because this is such a big program, it's just, it's a massive undertaking that they're doing. And so a lot of what has been done so far has been creating the infrastructure for the program. And so the spend-down has been less. I think that would be accurate to say, up until this point, the spend-down has been less. You can see we're at 826,000 through the end of October. We did meet with them in our last quarterly meeting and stress the importance of hitting their goals and hitting, because we kind of have the contract divided up in the amount per year, and hitting those. Because, so, but they know, and they're trying to figure out how. Because it's complicated. They're working with the county. They got money from the county and the valley as well for these. So they're dividing a lot of it into three different reimbursements. And it's tricky, because you have to make sure that what's reimbursing is from the city of Spokane. But they're trying to see if there's any contracts or other things that they can put in the funding towards us. And they did just reach out recently and say, there's a big $200,000 contract that's gonna be on top of their normal draws that they're trying to get in, that they should get in in this year as well. So that should boost the numbers as well.
Yeah, so I'm wondering, though, what happens if, and I don't imagine we're gonna try to claw these dollars back, but if that was something that was potentially gonna happen, once we get past that 2024 date, how, is there a way to reallocate at that point in time?
We cannot reallocate after 2024.
And so if all 5 million doesn't get expended, then after we get past that date, all 5 million doesn't get expended by the end '26, it just goes back to the Fed?
Correct, unfortunately, that's how it is.
Which, which leads me to my thoughts here. I know that this is already happening, but if we can continue to stress to them how important it is for them to get these dollars out the door, because what I don't want us to have to do is to have to return any of the money. And so making sure that they have a realistic plan that they can give to us to where we can make sure that these dollars are gonna go out. The, on top of that, what I don't want is them just reimbursing anything, because it sort of fits within the parameters. There were very specific goals with this, and so I wanna make sure we're reaching those. And I don't want it to, again, just be like, well, this can be reimbursed, even though it has nothing to do with the program or something. I want it all to be very focused, but I also want them to be able to get them. I want it all to be very focused, but I also want them to be able to get the money out the door. And if the conversation becomes, okay, one point two five a year probably isn't likely, maybe it's only a million, or maybe it's only seven hundred and fifty, the soonest that we can know that is going to be really important. And this is where, I guess, some of the, you know, responsibility will fall to you to be like, you know, they're telling us this, but realistically, I don't know that we can do it because we will have to be really specific with those dollars, so.
Yeah, and I'm I'm happy to to meet with them more regularly and meet with you all more regularly just to give more specific updates so those decisions can be made and made in a timely manner because it is very time sensitive. That's why I did want to stress that in within the contract. I will say that the the data dashboard that they created was is really, really cool. It's it is tracking.
Can we access that?
It's public access, so anyone can, you you, but I don't know how much of all the stuff because basically all the schools are compiling all of their students pre-K through college, and they're tracking, they're tracking all the students, they're tracking attendance, they're tracking grades, they're tracking if they're meeting with school counselors so they can provide extra services. They're trying to push people into mentoring that are having maybe some issues at school, so there's an extra support to push them up to make that higher education more realistic. So they're they're doing and they're doing a lot of work around FAFSA right now as well because the way these scholarships work, they're last in dollars, so they have to fill out their FAFSA, they have to get as much money in as they can. And then that difference between what they get in their FAFSA and the total amount of their bill is is the promised scholarship that they are they are starting. And so in two thousand twenty-four, students in the class of two thousand twenty-four, they're doing a pilot this year for those graduating students in ten area high schools for those promised scholarships. And starting in two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year, they're going to be rolling that out to the whole whole citywide.
And so for the data points, are they also looking at other, maybe non-traditional, like percentage of of students using the in-school, like health centers or counseling centers or percentage of students who are homeless, you know, couch surfing?
I know, I know counselors, I know they're putting counselor data in there. You can probably, you can get Ben Small in here for when his next presentation, he'd give you a lot more of those details than than I could at this time, but he they're tracking a lot from what I understand. So that was the the higher education one. We can go to the next next slide. Youth Behavioral Health. This is a one million dollar project. This program's purpose is to provide lasting capital dollars to assist in construction, project, or expansion of an existing facility. This construction must result in and/or expand culturally appropriate services to at-risk youth. So there's not a lot to report here. Applications have just closed and are currently being evaluated and scored. We're projected to have those awards by the end of next week, and then we will come before you with with the results for that. But we just wanted to make sure that was included. We are, we are working on that program. Go to the the next one. That was the last project. So I I put together now, this, I know this is a little bit small, but the ARPA project breakdown, I thought it'd be good that you could see the budget and then how much was awarded and then how much was spent and then also remaining in those in those projects. And you'll notice the assistance to small business and nonprofit, those are both completed, fully completed projects. The budget's right there, five million. Like I said, that that tiny bit remaining, that's the difference between what was awarded and what was spent. That was due to the the receipts. We had to have proper receipts. We had to have the expenses that we were reimbursing, and that was retrospective, not prospective. So but that was really a pretty small amount in in considering. There was a little bit more with the small businesses. And again, that was the major feedback we got from both the Carl Maxi Center and HPPA is a lot of these smaller businesses really, you know, need extra technical assistance, especially around accounting and bookkeeping and and that sort of thing. And I know Mark Pond at the library does a great job with the Business Resource Center and all of that, and I worked with him along with this project as well. But that was, that was the major feedback we got just with that that technical assistance aspect. But I won't go through line by line on the numbers or anything, but I thought it would be good that you could just see kind of the project, the budget, awarded, spent, and what's remaining on that. You can go to, go ahead, yeah.
Oh, do you have numbers on sort of the internal spends? So like the Municipal Justice Center, the some of the others that we've allocated ARPA dollars towards?
That will be with the the report that I update every month that I'll send to you. It has every single allocation, a hundred percent of the money accounted for.
Okay.
Yep, these are one the ones that our current ARPA team has just been going over. This, again, is similar. It's just kind of a graphic to that last point. That bottom line in red is the budgeted amount. The next line up is the spent amount, and then the top line is the remaining amount for each one of those projects. So, you know, the goal is to have the, like those two bottom ones, the assistance to nonprofit and small businesses. We want to see that that spent up there with what was budgeted is the goal. And and we've reached about half, you know, of these projects, about half of it is funded. Now, the majority of that is the small business and nonprofit, and the rest is ongoing. But I thought it'd be good, you can kind of see just that graphic alongside, so you can have an idea of where those budgets are and where the spend down is for those programs. Any other last questions, comments, concerns?
You guys have been amazing. This has been so much work, and your team has been absolutely incredible to work with. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks so much.
Yeah, this is so helpful. Thank you so much.
Yeah, definitely. Any other information you guys need, feel free to reach out.
Is there, well, here's a question for you. If 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 we were to do this again, start over, is there anything you would have, you would recommend to us to do differently in how we consider either the the buckets or the specific spends or is there anything you would just, from your work on this, from your end?
That's a, yeah, that's a big question. I mean, I think especially surrounding the small business, it was trying to trying to find a way to qualify those organizations was was just challenging and knowing many organizations and businesses just operate differently, and so their losses are seen differently due to COVID. And reaching into the community and working with organizations to help was was a huge benefit. And that kind of got added on right at the end, and I'm really glad that it did because it helped a ton of businesses qualify for those for those grants. And so it's just the the community outreach piece is is challenging to to get hear from the community and then also be able to pull it off. You know, they they say what they want, but then, you know, when it comes to meeting those federal guidelines, it's 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 challenging. I think the city told a good line, and they were always telling me, you know, hey, work with these organizations as best you can. Let's be as accommodating as we can. I think the city really did that through these programs. One thing that, you know, organizations need is their their UEI through SAM.gov so they can track those funds. Those small businesses and nonprofits, some of them took three months to get that, but we didn't disqualify them because of that. We said, we will hold these funds, we will award these funds, and we will wait until you get that. And once you get that, then we can attach it to your application. And even improper receipts, probably seventy-five percent of the organizations right at first give me improper receipts, and we didn't just disqualify them, we could say, hey, we saw your, you know, financial statements, we know there was a loss, we will work with you to get the qualifying receipts. And the city did a great job of being accommodating to those organizations and allowing a lot of back and forth. I I had HPPA come in and they handed me a binder where I had glued in receipts from one organization glued in, and I took it up to my desk and we just, page by page, we worked through it to get those. So that's just one example of, you know, kind of what we what we worked with. And there's multiple times I met with people like, I don't understand this, like technical issues, I can't figure out how to upload it into the computer. And I was like, and so I, a couple of people even came all the way down to City Hall, and I went up and I made copies and I put it in their file for them. So I think, I think the city really did a good job of being as accommodating as we could. Obviously, you know, there's, there's, you know, businesses that just can't meet the federal guidelines because we do need to have those receipts, and unfortunately, that was the case for some. But I think for the most part, meeting with the community and working with them has has been been great.
So it sounds like maybe there were some some technical issues that we really worked through that, you know, if we did this again, we we've definitely learned some lessons that would make it more more streamlined.
Definitely.
Awesome. Anything else? All right. Well, thank you very much. Is there anything that we need to update on with regards to the regional homeless discussion?
So when the meeting switched to ad hoc, I don't have any more to to update, but, you know, I don't know if there are any updates that Nicolette would like to give on on anything.
Is Nicolette here?
I think she's hanging.
I know, she told me to text her, but I just sent it over the microphone instead, hoping she'd hear it.
Well, we can, we can give Nicolette just a quick moment. She's on her way down.
That's right.
And so what what is the status? You said there wasn't a meeting?
So we haven't had meetings. After our 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 last meeting that we had, it was decided that we would switch to ad hoc. We didn't need to be meeting every other week anymore, every week. And so now they're just on an on-call basis, but Nicolette might have some some different updates for us.
Thanks, Nicolette.
Hi, guys.
Hello.
So like last time, we talked about the the governance structure, the funding structure, about doing community outreach. Since we spoke last, I went to the Experience Matters meeting with all the service providers. I listened to their feedback about what they thought their experience was being brought to the table, a lot of interesting things. One of the things that they did say that I would be remiss not to mention is that although they had a seat at the table, they felt like they didn't get a legitimate seat at the table. Like many of us, we were, we were only really allowed so many people to be in the room, even though it was an open public meeting eventually, but we needed to have clear representatives who would represent the various jurisdictions or or other groups in order to minimize some of the other cross chatter that could have happened. While I completely understand all of their concerns, I do also think that at a certain point with those meetings, we needed to get some buy-in from those jurisdictions, and we needed to know where they stood, what the hard noes were, and how we can move forward. But I just want to say that the community engagement piece is not over whatsoever. And I'm committed to going to the neighborhood councils, community assembly, having another one of those community conversations like I had a few months ago. And even at the homeless coalition this morning, I made a call to action to all of those there to reach out to me. I gave them my email address, and I said, let me know what you think community engagement looks like. Because what we don't want to happen is get ready for the jurisdictions to vote on it, and they say the community wasn't involved in this, right? And so at every step of the way for, oh, my gosh, it feels like over a year now, I've been committed to the community and their need to have something to say about how this moves forward. And again, Councilman, Councilman Bigel, they were very impressed with the fact that you were trying to push for fewer elected officials and more subject matter experts. And that came out today when Michelle gave her presentation on Experience Matters, her three-minute presentation. And so I just want to, you know, commend you, too, for being a champion for trying to ensure that we don't fall into the same traps that King County did and that we're making sure that it's not just electeds, but also the subject matter experts that have a really robust way of of engaging. One of the other things I wanted to mention that came from the Experience Matters conversation was this idea that I had with Dr. Robert Littman, who many of you know, he is the co-chair of the COC Board. And one of the things that we discussed was perhaps suggesting quarterly meetings with the COC Board as that advisory group and the governing board to ensure that accountability going forward is clear and transparent to the community and that you can see how the advisory board really works with the governing board to inform them so they can make data, you know, driven decisions moving forward. And one last thing, maybe that data piece. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Stratton, last night in the CHHS Board meeting, asked again about where the universities are going to be involved and where we get that that really comprehensive data piece. I think that we need to have more continued discussions about that because merely inheriting the CMS CMIS system we have currently in the city and that team, if that's what they think they're going to inherit, I don't think that's going to be sufficient enough for a regional authority to actually do what it needs to do. And so I think that future discussions on data and how we're going to pay to pump up that data and how we're going to get the matching funds for some of those grants that the authority would take over, those are pieces that still need to be discussed. So, are there any questions?
Yeah, well, I mean, we, I have struggled to get access to CMIS data, as you know, and we all have, and that's definitely a big thing that needs to change. That data component's got to be important. So anything we can do to bolster that's good. On the other piece of the governance, I I think it makes sense, you know, what you're looking at. To me, though, the more important piece is how those individuals are selected rather than necessarily that there's more of them than electeds. I just need, for me, it's really important, I think, that each jurisdiction have some real buy-in as to who those individuals are that would serve on that board since, at the end of the day, there's got to be some level of accountability or, you know. So that, to me, is is important. The question I want to ask you, though, is if you're at a neighborhood council meeting talking regional homeless authority, what is your message to them or what is, what are the questions that you're asking them? Like, what's the real specific feedback from a neighborhood council that you'd like to get?
So I would bring a lot of that before you guys, before I went on that little circuit, so to speak. But I think that a lot of it would be to make sure that they know that we care about the way that they interact with the city and the city council per the charter and respect the fact that there are times when, for example, District One has many more shelters than any other district, right? And so being sensitive to the fact that the impacts are different depending on what neighborhood you are in and that we need to have that pipeline of communication. What I'd really like to do is have a Good Neighbor Agreement that goes through all the neighborhood councils and the authority. I haven't really discussed that with you, but I think that drafting something like that up and then getting, giving them the opportunity to either write a letter or to sign on as each neighborhood council, I think would be a good way of showing solidarity, a good way of making sure we're all on the same page, that we know what the expectations are and that they have some sort of hotline or whatever where they can, you know, get in contact with the various individuals if they have some, you know, situation happen with good, bad, or indifferent. Having that line of communication fully stood up, I think, is going to be important. And to your point about the selection process, I did bring that up even to the Experience Matters group. And I think that what's interesting is they also care about what that selection process looks like and wants to have details about that. And so I communicated that back to Gavin, and hopefully, as they go through the edits of the interlocal agreement, the charter, and then that set of recommendations, that'll be a piece of of that moving forward. And anything else on the on the neighborhood council side that you guys think you'd want to hear, questions from them, you know, or some sort of commitment like that Good Neighbor Agreement? I'm more than willing to to workshop that before I go to Patrick Stryker and and discuss that.
And one of the things I would add is that with the Good Neighbor Agreement and Salvation Army in Emerson Garfield, they would be really good to touch base with the neighborhood and Salvation Army because they they really have done a good job in that neighborhood. They go to all the neighborhood council meetings, they give updates, there's a phone number. Because the neighborhood councils, in my opinion, and when I talk to them, they want the politics out of it. They want a phone number that they can call to say, we've got a, you know, this going on, can somebody, I'm dealing right now with a guy who's got stuff going on in West Central, and everywhere I send it, I'm getting, well, call three-one-one, right? He's frustrated. So, I mean, but what Salvation Army did with Emerson Garfield, that would be something every neighborhood could learn from because they really are committed to those neighborhood council meetings, and there's a number, they can call somebody. I have not had any complaints since the way out opened, you know, after the first few weeks, so.
Yeah, it's something I just thought of. I have a meeting with code enforcement later to talk about their outreach when they decommission encampments.
Right.
And so one of the things that we could talk about is another kind of like hotline or connection to the neighborhood councils when they report and some sort of partnership with, you know, three-one-one and the neighborhood councils and code enforcement, whatever the revamping of that looks like, because they need more support to do that effectively. They don't always want to show up with police and not be the first interaction with, and it's against all best practices to do that anyway. And, you know, we can, there are other ways that we can actually support them and be more effective overall than rather, I mean, you guys got the presentation a couple of months ago. It's kind of like, oh, play a game of whack-a-mole when we're not doing it effectively. It just kind of pops up elsewhere. It's not good for the community, it's not good for the people who are suffering, it's not good for city employees, it's not good for just about anybody who's involved.
And connecting with the cop shops.
Yeah.
Because we're overlooking them quite a bit because they're willing to go out, clean up graffiti, help when they can, and that that might be a connection. But I know that Emerson Garfield, they really worked it out well with Salvation Army, and there are very little problems.
Yeah, I'll bring that up today and see if they have any additional feedback.
Councilmember Gill?
Yeah, Spokane Riverkeeper also comes to mind. They're responding a lot to a lot of the encampments and cleanup. My question, I guess, you know, one week from today, we're going to have to take a tough vote on TRAC. And we have this looming end-of-the-month deadline. And with the regional authority and also Experience Matters, and I really appreciated hearing from Joe from Family Promise on Monday night, do they have an overall, I don't know, either sentiment or feel like they've been able to weigh in on what the future should be?
Of the regional authority or of TRAC?
Of TRAC.
I'm hoping that we'll hear from some of them during the public testimony piece on December fourteenth. I think that especially with respect to the service providers, it's a very frustrating situation for a lot of reasons. It's hard to trust any future RFP process with the city of Spokane, given how poorly this last round went. And I do know that we're trying to make strides to make sure CHHS is back aligned with procurement so we can avoid a lot of those pitfalls previously. But we can't take the sugar out of the Kool-Aid, so to speak, right? Like, it's already happened, and so a lot of service providers are are losing a little bit of faith with this process. And so we're going to have to work to reestablish that trust and through transparency about what changes we are making to ensure that we don't go through what we previously went through. And I think that's a key piece of it. And then to the point with respect to Joe's comments the other night, you know, there there are a lot of service providers that don't understand why the shelter itself, which costs so much money, that thirteen million that it could cost, that's about as much as the regional homeless authority is going to start out with across the, it's a lot of money. But it's also like gone like that, right? And so I think that's kind of this dread that they have is, well, when we're talking about a system that's this big and we're prioritizing funding to this small population of individuals, are we really doing, are they really getting the services that we hope that they get for that thirteen million? What does wraparound services look like? What does moving out of homelessness look like in that kind of space? And are we ignoring some other critical pieces where Family Promise wildly successful? It's probably our most successful shelter system and model in the city of Spokane, and yet they get the least amount of of funding. Now, there are a lot of reasons why that might be true or false, but I think this is an opportunity for us to look system-wide a little bit more. And then as we're moving into these regional discussions and we get to that how, how instead of the what, as Gavin says, those are going to be the kinds of things we're going to have to focus on so that we're actually building efficiencies going forward. So I hope I answered your question.
Nicolette? You did. Thank you. Yeah, it was very helpful. Are we, so to to Joe Ader's point, with regards to funding some of those other providers, are we talking, or have we talked to them about essentially just adding on beds, so to speak, right? So in lieu of funding TRAC at, say, three hundred and fifty, could we add ten beds to Family Promise, ten beds to VOA, ten beds to something else, and start reducing the number of beds at TRAC and moving them into these smaller providers as a shift away, as as we shift away from TRAC?
I haven't thought about that in particular. I would want to keep in the back of my head that the population that is served at TRAC is different from.
Yes, and that's why I'm saying lots of different.
But there are some who say, you know, they don't have, you know, they they could be broken up with their spouse or don't, you know, have their child with them right now, but they 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 will in the future, because their spouse might also be, you know, homeless. They may be at Family Promise, they may be able to join them. There are those kinds of things. But overall, in terms of how we scale it down and how we prioritize the system wide to make a really concrete plan for scaling down those beds, that's the kind of stuff that needs to go into the RFP.
Yes.
Right? And so I would really encourage you guys to to think that way, and I I can come to you with some suggestions. I don't know what that discussion looks like. I haven't been in any of those conversations about what the next RFP looks like.
Well, I've I've been insisting that I'd like to be a part of that process, but we now have a change then there where that agreement was made. So I have no idea if I will have any input at all, so.
Well, I would encourage you to put your, I'm a council member, you know, hat on, and and really make sure that's true, because I feel like you guys really got a raw end of the deal too in this last process. And asserting yourselves to make it right going forward, I think, is important.
One of the issues with adding ten here and ten there is that there are space constraints. And so like, you know, at Family Promise, you might not be able to add ten beds. And so the most realistic pathway forward is actually, you know, potentially building another structure, and then we get sixty beds or something like that. But I know a lot of our providers are max capacity with the space that they have. And so I don't think ten would be necessarily realistic, but we could shift and help somebody else to where they could get sixty new beds or something like that, which might be more feasible. I'll be far more expensive.
And it might be good to ask them, what can you do if we were to write, you know, something that would strengthen the system overall? Because sometimes we don't know what we don't know, right?
Yeah.
Well, big big picture, I still think we should be trying to get out of the sheltering business, move more towards transitional housing, where we have, where we're, you know, putting our money towards assets that can then further be utilized to benefit the community and then leave the a lot of the sheltering more to the nonprofits and support them the best we can, but but leave that more to them than us.
And focus on assessments, because that's the thing. If we had assessment centers throughout the community, then we could catch those people. Because some of them end up at TRAC, and they get lost in the in the shuffle and all of the people when, you know, nobody's assessed them. So we don't know what their needs are, right? I mean, you had, when we had all the seniors at at.
Camp Hope.
Camp Hope, it was like, they didn't belong there, and had, had we thought to assess them before they go in, then we could have gotten them somewhere else.
And there are some efforts to make the coordinated entry system more efficient with these satellite locations, and and they do have them to a certain extent. But making that engagement a little bit more robust and easier to to handle is is good. And I think, and now I'm having flashbacks from when I used to give council testimony, but there are all these, the other these other options that we don't talk about, which is, there is an option for a sort of self-sustaining model where we put money into something every year that always needs more money every year. But we could build something that actually generates revenue to the point where it can be a little bit more self-sustaining. Like one time, many years ago, I was before a couple of you, where you guys came on board, and and said, hey, look, we've got this proof of concept with UGM, Salvation Army, and Goodwill, who all have thrift stores. And they do hire some folks who have previously experienced homelessness, and in virtue of that, they generate a ton of income. And Spokane, as I guess the song says, like, is thrift store heavy, right? Like, we love to donate our items. Don't start singing it in your head. And so we have no lack of of donations from the community. The community is always willing to come out, donate their items. I think that if we had, you know, if the PDA decided to do that, I think it would be really smart. It's a good way to get all those little pieces. You come in, you got a job right off the bat, you got a place to stay, and you've got this this system that's actually putting money back in. And it's a return on investment to the taxpayers too, who are essentially funding it, and also good faith to the businesses who, you know, obviously generate that sales tax that allows us to have a budget at all, so.
Are there other questions or comments?
We could talk forever on this.
Yeah, we could just go on and on. Let's solve the, let's solve the issue right now.
And I don't know if you wanted to announce, but we have this lovely event happening behind us for Councilwoman Stratton, which is why I was out of breath and running down here, putting my jacket on.
Yes, yes. Well, we are, we are soon to adjourn so that we can go celebrate Councilmember Stratton's retirement from the city after ten glorious years of her service. So, yes, no, it's.
Glorious years.
Glorious. That's right.
Glorious years.
Glorious. Okay, well, if there's nothing else for the good of the order, we will adjourn and retire to the celebration.
I don't think it starts till twelve-thirty, right?
That's right. Correct.
Twelve-thirty.
Correct. All right, well, we're adjourned.
So you have time to fix.